Well, it's great to be before this august body. I so I can get into the issues that you've raised. And I'd also note that I think everyone here has my cellphone as well, so they're also welcome to reach out anytime. But this legislation, as I've said previously, is really born out of islanders calls for steamship accountability, oversight and better management. Back when it failed in its mission as a lifeline to Martha's Vineyard. And the steamship in a short couple of months missed 550 boats. They had boats that stopped working, ran aground, stranded. At one point, five out of 10 vessels were out of commission. In 2018, thousands of people were stranded, national news came in. There was no communication. People were terrified because their lifeline failed to act and failed to work. And thousands of islanders protested and called for a change and called for an independent audit. And it took a long time for the steamship just to do the independent audit. There was a huge amount of reluctance just to do that, even after the boat line failed to serve islanders. So eventually, you know, Senator Sierra and I wrote a letter calling on them to do it. They eventually spent a quarter million dollars on an audit report that outlined. You know, I recommend everyone read it if you haven't. It's very long. And it recommended a whole host of things based on findings. And it found a whole lot of very deeply troubling issues. And to the steamship's credit, they've implemented a fair number of those changes. One that they did not implement was around a chief operating officer. And you know, a big piece that they found was the steamship, you know, has generally a lack of accountability. And they have a you know, a management process that doesn't have long-term vision. And one that is not, you know, responsive or you know, conducive to long-term planning. And so, you know, I saw that this you know, I read the report. Certainly wanted to give time for the steamship to implement those changes. You know, COVID hit. We had other, other things to do. And then, you know, I saw that Jim Malkin, your, your board member had tried once, maybe twice unsuccessfully to implement a COO position. And I spoke with the authors of the report. And had a conversation with them about just a direct conversation. We sat down together to talk, run through the report. I had them go through it with me and, you know, I asked him about the COO position and about that lack of kind of long-term planning and accountability and complacency. And they, you know, outlined the COO and, you know, addressing complacency and accountability is, as as chief items that are vital to the steamship acting as a lifeline. And so, you know, based on, based on the report, based on their feedback, you know, proposed these changes. But, you know, before I did, I called, Jim was actually the first person on earth to hear about it some, you know, six months ago, maybe at this point, sometime in the fall. And had a couple of conversations with him about it. Just kind of, you know, iterating on it, talking about the report. And then, you know, before filing, I at the very least reached out to every single member of this commission, except for Peter Wharton. I don't know if he's on the call. There he is. I'm sorry, Peter. Frankly, I didn't even know you were on the commission and I, I do apologize. We should probably connect. But I, I did reach out to every single member of the commission and had conversations with the the, the majority of the members, all of which were positive. I also talked to both, or at least reached out to both port council members. I talked to at least one of them, maybe, maybe both. Had a personal conversation about it before filing the bill. So I just find it a bit confusing when I hear that people weren't reached out to. And I would also note that this isn't, we opened up the steamship legislation two years ago. And we got legislation passed two years ago on the steamship statute. Dealing with a much bigger issue of the port towns being at the time when we filed it liable for tens of millions of dollars. And I didn't hear a single word from anyone. Then, when we didn't reach out to anyone then. We never heard a single word from a member of this body or anywhere else in opposition to opening up the statute then. And, you know, frankly, it was a good thing to do and we proved that all of these, a lot of these fears that I, I hear now are, are totally unfounded. And additionally, you know, when the steamship was under attack, like Julian and I did more to defend it than anyone else. And within one weekend, had that kind of nefarious bill. It had a hearing on a Friday. By Monday, it was sent to study. You can't, you can't operate faster than that. So, you know, look, I think these are important changes. I think these are changes that have been called upon by islanders. You know, there's been, we, we've gotten subsequent emails from people. You know, we only got four of them, which is surprising given how many articles there are, but everyone's been supportive and told, telling us to stick to it. And you know, so I think this is the right thing to do. I told the steamship authority when I filed it and I've made statements in the press and at least into public bodies that if they implemented the COO position that I would, that I would prefer that. I prefer they do it on their own. We gave them four years to do it. Jim tried to get it done. You know, yesterday, right? They implemented the position. I mean, that's a huge win in my mind. And I think if anything, like we deserve, Julian and I deserve credit for getting that done. And so we're going to take that out of the, out of the bill. I mean, that's just, that was, it was my intention all along to have that be, you know, something we pushed them to do. And I'm glad that they're now, they're now able to do it. So we've also heard from the steamship authority that they want some, they want their statute changed in a, in an area. And so we're going to take up that recommendation as well. There is an area in the statute that is just antiquated, goes back to the 60s, that the steamship has to issue a report every April. That's to the, to the legislature, a public report. And that's just onerous, given the cadence of the reporting period being on a fiscal year. And so they reached out, Bob and his team reached out and sent us language that they want added to this bill to change it from April to July. And I, I told them we'd be happy to do that. So you know, we're happy to make that change on behalf of the steamship as well. And I told the committee, the transportation committee today that, you know, we, we'd want to kind of switch out the language, you know, add in the language the steamship authority wants in place of the, the COO language, given the change by, by the board, which we're, which we're very happy to see. So happy to answer any further questions, but you know, look, I think at the end of the day, you know, the steamship authority exists to serve as a lifeline to the islands. And we want to make sure that, that folks have improved reliability of service. And what happens back in 2018, which was due to, you know, and kind of a, due to just complacency, lack of oversight and mismanagement never happens again for island residents.
Thank you, Dylan. Anybody have any questions? For our representative? Yes, Jim Malkin.
All right. Thanks for that, Dylan. And again, I just want to reiterate, I was very careful, not critical of what was in the legislation. What I was talking about was process and thank you for reaching out for me, which you'll recall was in confidence and it was kept that way. And to bounce your ideas off of me. My concern that I raised was again, and I think I used this phrase when I first spoke, was we're trying to help you help us here. And so the more public input that we can have into stuff, the better it serves all of our purposes, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And just for the record.
And Jim, I think, you know, I, I've been quick to, I think publicly praise you as well. I think you're doing a good job on the board and I appreciate the you know, I think, I think getting the COO position done is, is you know, at least given what we see in the report and given what islanders have called for is a really good thing.
Thanks, Dylan. And just for the record, I know you did try to reach out to me, but had an incorrect phone number. So we were not able to speak, but
Apparently you don't use a landline anymore, huh?
No. Now that we've remedied that, I anticipate that won't happen again. So that's great. Okay, Peter Wharton, you have your hand up.
Let me come up here. Oh, so Representative Fernandez, it's nice, nice to meet you. I think you won't remember this, but there was a summer day where you were walking down Gorham Avenue in Oak Bluffs with a coat over your shoulder knocking on doors and you, I was like, who is this kid walking down the street? And, you know, was, was very impressed to see you reaching out to islanders in that way and becoming an effective, you know, legislator on our behalf. So I will reach out to the chairman with, to get your cellphone and make sure that we, we do stay connected. Am I right to, that, that there was another piece of the legislation that anticipated creating a position for grant administration?
I would have heard of Jim on that. I, so no, no, on the legislation front, there is not that in legislation. Looking at what the steamship did yesterday, and I'm sure Jim can speak to this more than I can because he was in the room. I think that might just be a component of the COO position, but Jim, you're probably better suited to answer that.
Yeah, it's part of the organizational structure that was set up to put a COO in the proper place. And additionally, there was identified a need for staff to work on grants, given the amount of grant money and grant appetite that the steamship authority has, particularly in terms of alternative fuels. Thank you.
Okay. So the only thing remaining in the legislation then will be the change in reporting to the legislature from, from April to July?
No.
That's what we're going to add to the legislation in place of the COO piece, given the steamship's changes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Joe Salida, you have your hand up?
I do. The representative did call me the Friday before the legislation was filed and we spoke. One of my concerns is though, is, is the term limits. We elect the county commissioners and I would think it'd be up to them whether or not they want to set the term limits. It's important to have institutional knowledge being on the board. I've been on for a year as the port council and every day is a new learning experience. I'm sure it's going to take time to do this. Jim's been on there for, I think, two years now. It's going to take time to do this. I just think that the term limits should be eliminated also. That's up to the county commissioners, who they want to appoint and when they want to terminate the person that they do appoint.
Yeah, I mean, I just respectfully disagree with with removing it. I think, I mean, look, there's, you know, I mean, if you go back to the report and the findings, you know, there are issues of complacency and lack of oversight that kind of accrue over time. And, you know, we try to strike a balance here. I mean, I think Jim's a great example of what like new blood and new ideas means on a steamship board. And we want to strike a balance between being responsive, being innovative, coming up with new ways to serve islanders and also that institutional knowledge, which is precisely why we did not make any change to the port council. I mean, their job is to counsel. And so I think, you know, I, so I, I hear, I hear you and I, I agree with you in that respect. And that's why we kind of wanted to strike a healthy balance between the two and keep the port council to serve as, as long as, you know, I guess as long as you're appointed and as long as you'd like. And and I think, look, I mean, you know, you go back to some, what was at the root of some of these issues here? And you see that kind of complacency and that kind of creep over time. And we want to not have that. I mean, this is a decade, well, nine years, basically a decade long, 10 years. That is plenty of time to get your feet underneath you. And then we also retain that institutional knowledge through the port council. So you know, look, I, I think I think reasonable people can have differences opinion on this, but that's the, but that's the thinking on it.
With all due respect, representative, I would think that if people would have satisfied that both the county commissioners out that are appointing these people and that's, that's the way they would respond. If you don't like what they're, who they're appointing, you elect somebody else to appoint somebody else. That's all. I mean, we don't have term limits for state representatives or for selectmen or for state senators. Why have term limits for the, the members of the, the governors of the steamship authority?
Well, a lot of, well, it's, it's appointed, not elected. And so if you just go to look at kind of best board management practices at a lot of the boards, you know, across the state and elsewhere, a lot of them are, are appointed and have around a decade-long cadence.
We'll agree to disagree, representative. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith, I see your hand up and I'll get you in just a second. Dylan, I appreciate you're looking for a healthy balance. And I think one way to achieve that is to have healthy deliberation as the appointing body of our steamship authority representative. You know, procedurally, I think it would benefit all of us to have open discussion about this, you know, that's a full commission here, being the appointing body, you know, prior to things like this happening. And I doubt very much that you wouldn't gain the support that you're looking for, for this. But it would be really great to have that public discourse about it, you know, with the vibe.
That's what this does in a lot of ways too, right? Like you saw, like this definitely gives a lot more power to the county in a way. And you actually saw that through, what I thought you guys ran a really good process and, and and the search committee. And so this gives the county and the public an exact runway of time. They know when that position is up. And while, you know, you can say, you know, anyone can be removed at any time. I think it's also fair to say that would be a very rare, very rare occurrence. And so this, you know, this isn't the main reason, but tangential to the reasons I outlined is that you do give the public, the county, a long runway and in an exact runway on the process for which a new member is, is, is appointed.
Thanks, Dylan. Keith, you had your hand up and then Tristan?
Yes, I do. A couple of things. First, thanks Dylan for coming today. Second of all, I touched on this at our last meeting and this, I, I don't think this has anything to do with why Dylan wasn't at a county commission meeting. But one thing I'll say is that it's easy to go to, to see the Nantucket Board of Selectmen because there is one of them instead of the county commission plus six town, six town life boards. It's awfully inefficient. For anyone to come to all six meetings, you can talk to the housing bank folks who are really working very hard. They're having to organize around six different town meetings and a litany of town boards. It doesn't serve anyone to have all that. But that's just my ranting. The more important thing I want to talk about was this issue of a term limit. I have no problem with term limits being placed on the board of governors. The reason being is I think that institutional knowledge is absolutely critical. I would not be able to do what I do on the county commission without the institutional knowledge of everyone on the board who's been here before me. However, at a certain point, it becomes a thing, in my opinion, at the, at the steamship authority where you are there for so long that you be, sometimes can, can become a creature of the steamship authority. The board of governors is not there to be a creature of the steamship authority. The board of governors is there to help run the authority and look at it objectively. And frankly, I sometimes think that the governors are less likely to obstruct the authority's doings when they've been there for a really long time. Like reasonable people can agree, disagree with me on that. I'll also point out for term limits, it's one thing to ask voters to vote any of us out of office for, for the specific reason that they want to change steamship authority governors. But this is not enough, you know, races for county commission are not racist for Congress. Voters, I don't think are frankly that engaged with what's going on. I was not asked when I ran the last time who I was going to vote for, for the steamship board of governors. It just didn't come up. And frankly, I don't think voters are so in tuned as to be voting on an, an issue as arcane as which one, which steamship authority governor we're going to support. So I think that term limits on this type of board that are appointed by this type of commission where we very infrequently have turnover ourselves is a really good thing. And it forces turnover where there are other, otherwise wouldn't be turnover. So I just wanted to defend that. And again, like Dylan said, though, reasonable people can disagree. There are people on the, on the county commission that I agree with 99% of the time that disagree with me on this. That's fine. But that's where I stand. I don't have any problem with, with term limits being placed. And I again, appreciate Dylan, you taking the time to come to our meeting today.
Thanks, Keith. Tristan, and then I'd like to move on if we could to just briefly the matter most recently that came up pertaining to the the House passing legislative approval for the position of the Martha's Vineyard Commission Commissioner being a tribal member versus a governor's appointee. All right. Tristan, you have one thing to add. And then if we could move on to that, I have Adam here from the Martha's Vineyard Commission. Thank you. You're muted. You're muted.
Yeah, I'm unreasonable most of the time and I recognize it. Having said that, I just want to respond to a few things. First of all, I do think voters are very informed and I've lived through things here institutionally where we changed after one term on several occasions, steamship authority representatives, public was very engaged in that, as was the county commission. And it was quite intense, actually, quite frankly, at that time. And so I wanted, the second thing is my other, I have no problem when Dylan called me and it wasn't until I, I read what Joe had said in the paper that I started realizing why I didn't like this process. I have no problem with the CEO. I do have a problem with term limits, but that's, you know, I, because I think that, again, what's happening is that changes to this legislation A are being legislated and Chairman Strauss didn't like that I said this at the hearing, but are being legislated by the legislature and it's our steamship authority. We created back in the day, and I lived, was part of that effort, a ports council to give a vote to the various ports that at the time didn't have a, a voice. So the ports councils, you know, of each port now have a voice. The unfortunately, in my opinion, but it is what it is, the, the board of governors of the steamship authority, the last time around got expanded and the vote and clout of the vineyard in Nantucket, and I happen to live on the vineyard, was reduced. You have people in Falmouth who I know who are very tenacious, who had the ear of another state senator and whether something happens or not with that, that, that's that's an issue. I think it's, I, you know, I have my own opinions about that issue. But, but opening up the legislation when it is opened up, and I know Dylan assured me it's not going to happen this time and I'm gonna keep my fingers crossed because he's there, I'm not, that he knows better than I do on this. But that's, that's, that, you know, that gets opened up. And let me just tell you, somebody in Springfield is representing thousands of voters in Springfield, for example. You know, they're not vested in what goes on. You know, I, I remember I've said this before, when I go to the state house, when we were lobbying the last time against changes to the steamship authority legislation, I got in one door because the guy thought I was from Tewksbury, had no idea what Tisbury was. You know, but Tewksbury had 50,000 voters or whatever. Yeah, sure, you can get through the door. And the point being that, that, that there's dangers in, in legislating from the legislature, our lifeline and, 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 you know, our why we appoint a governor. So I just, you know, again, I think Dylan, you know, Dylan, I love that you're our state rep and you've done, like I say, the win thing is huge. And you've done a lot of good things. I just hope in the future that we don't try and manage the steamship authority. Otherwise then what do we need, what do we need to appoint someone for? You know, we opposed, there were, there were efforts in the past year to have the state take over the steamship authority, serious efforts. Institutional knowledge, I apologize, Keith. But that, that's, that's what happened back then. And, and I don't think any of us want to see that happen. Anyway.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot to unpack there. I'll try to do it briefly. So first of all, this, I don't know what the perception is, but no one outside of, no one in Springfield cares about the steamship authority and is going to be doing anything about the steamship authority. I don't surprise that even has to come out of mouth. But look, the way, this is such an inconsequential bill that it won't go to a vote of the legislature. This will pass in an informal session, which means that it's the way, you know, I've passed nine bills in the past year. Seven of them have gone through informal session because the, they're relatively small bills that only concern of, of really minor concern that frankly isn't a big enough issue for the whole legislature to weigh in on or even care about. This tiny change is certainly, is certainly a part of that. So there won't be an opportunity for everyone to weigh in, because that's just not how, that's not what this legislation is. So there's that, you know, I think we have a pretty clear record of protecting the islands in that individual case of nefarious legislation that would have diluted power. And then again, we did this two years ago. And then one, didn't hear a single one of these concerns and two, all of these concerns that were raised never even came close to happening. And then three, the steamship exists in legislative statute. I mean, that's how it exists in the state. So you have to, it has to have legislative oversight on some level and go through legislative changes. For instance, the steamship admitted, the, the authority, the change that they're requesting us to do on the reporting cadence has to be a legislative change. It's, you know, coming down the pike here, big reason why we need Big reason why we need some of these changes that we've been calling for is the steamship authority is going to have to electrify their ferries. That is going to be a massive undertaking. It's going to cause the steamship authority to need new ferries uh, and work with towns and the utilities to put in charging stations. It's going to be, I mean, it's, it's going to be a lot coming down the pike. The steamship authority's bond cap is in legislative statute. That's going to have to be changed by the legislature in the next couple of years, by the way. Um, and so we're going to have to do another bill that I'm sure that maybe we can go through the same exercise. Um, and look, I, so it's a bit, I don't, yeah, I guess that's just how I would um, respond to it. Um, uh, and there's going to be nothing in this bill. You know, Julian and I uh, will ensure that this is a bill that um, is not touched by outsiders and is one that um, keeps the lifeline secure for islanders.